I hereby call this special meeting of the Nevada City Planning Commission to order. We'll start with the Nisonnan Tribe Recovery Mission. We acknowledge that the Nisonnan people are still here among us today, they're nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nisonnan land that was never ceded and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near-genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nisonnan land, we support the Nevada City Ranchery and Nisonnan Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition. Pledge of Allegiance. Tom, is your mind doing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. A roll call please.
Commissioner Nye?
Here.
Vice Chair Covden?
Here.
Chair Brown?
Here. Two Commissioners absent today. Next is for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on any items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, I'll move on to the consent calendar. Anyone in the public or on the commission who would like to make any comments or bring up any discussion on items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will move that we approve the consent calendar. Do you have a second?
Second? Not a second then.
Great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'll have approved that. Moving on to the first regular item, which is the sign in historic district, think natural and organic here's the line.
I think we've got the wrong agenda on our screen.
Oops.
Oops. I believe it's C, Architectural Review, yeah.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
No worries.
Let me open up the old packet. Let me go to the new one. All right. First item is 174 Grove Street, Architectural Review for the ADU. Please come forward.
Hello.
Yes, Mr.?
Yeah. I'll pass it in just a second.
Who's missing?
Anchesco and James Katani.
Ah, okay.
Did I mispronounce it, didn't I?
Katani.
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 Okay, so this project is for an ADU at 174 Grove Street. The project architect is Dave Mann, he's with us today. The property is a .47 acre lot with zoning of R1 and standard setbacks. There is Deer Creek, not Deer Creek, sorry, Little Deer Creek maybe, frontage on the rear of the lot. And a variance was approved previously for this property to accommodate a future ADU. The ADU that is before you today is, typically ADUs are reviewed and approved ministerially, but the way that our code reads is that if they are taller than 16 feet, they're basically non-consistent with our ministerial review standards. And so this project is before you to allow for a taller building in a standard architectural review format. Let's see here. The variance was reviewed, it's a little bit, I haven't seen a variance application be approved without a project or with a future project, but I did review that variance application and ensure that the conditions of approval for the ADU encompass the conditions that were included for the variance. So you'll see there, those there on the recommended conditions of approval. And for the SEQA review, I would recommend that the planning commission find the project exempt from further review pursuant to both Section 15303 and 15305 of the California Environmental Quality Act. 15303 is for new construction or conversion of small structures, including accessory dwelling units, and 15305 is minor alterations in land use limitations, including setback variances not resulting in the creation of new parcels. So I'll go ahead and pass around what Dave brought today. He did, I will say that the design intent of the structure is to create cohesiveness with the primary residence. The house, the existing home has a steep, I think it's a 12 and 12 roof, and it is motherlode architecture. So rather than designing a building that was, you know, short and met that 16-foot height limitation that could be approved ministerially, he decided that it's in his client's best interest to come to the commission for the building that she actually wants. And also, he did consider steeper than that also and landed on this as sort of a happy medium in the interest of having the building not have as much stature or drawing as much attention to it. So the roof pitch that's proposed is eight and 12, and the height on the rear of the building would be 20 feet 8 inches, and on the front of the building, which would be Slavon grade, that height would be, let's see here, 18 feet from grade to the roof peak. So I'll go ahead and send these around. It's kind of a funny section of our code that was adopted when some of the state housing laws were coming through, and the 16-foot height, the way that I understand it, was the strictest regulation that we could adopt, so I assume that it maybe was sort of just brought in and may need an update. Thanks. Could you mind passing one back to me?
No.
I should have grabbed one.
Take two.
One for Donna.
One for Donna. Dave, anything you would like to add?
Did you guys get a chance to get out and look at the site? I put some flagging out just as a building perimeter, just for location.
I did not.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I was telling Lisa, I really think this is kind of a perfect setup for a second unit because the front of the property is wide open, it's kind of a rare lot on Grove Street. It's 50 feet, the front of the existing house is 50 feet from the street. This sits back 85 feet and is actually partially shielded by the carport that's out in front and a solid fence. And so I think, and it also sits six feet lower floor-wise than the main house, so it takes a very secondary position.
How much lower, six feet?
About six feet. Five and a half or six. It, so I think, it actually has very little impact from the street. If we were forced into the shallower pitch, all you'd see is just the peak of the roof peeking over the fence and there would be no window visible, but in the version that I did, I felt like it was kind of nice to put a second window up in the gable end of the, into the attic, even though it's decorative, rather than just looking at a big plain gabled face. So, it felt to me like, I know the city encourages steeper pitched roofs, a 12 and 12 pitch seemed a little bit excessive since that space is not being used for living space, so compromising it about halfway in between, halfway in between the three and a half and 12 or four and 12 and 12, 12 seemed a decent compromise aesthetically. We're not using that space for anything other, it's just attic. So, it's a very straightforward little building, but I think that it's appropriate because the existing residence is a simple gabled form. And what we're doing is proposing similar siding, trim, essentially everything the same as the main residence. So, that's all I have. Certainly happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission?
Uh-oh.
So this, this study, this is your study in different roof pitches?
Yes.
Am I using comical language?
No.
I appreciate it. It's a good illustration. And you're proposing an eight, eight?
Eight and a half? Eight and 12.
Yeah, okay. Eight and 12. Yeah. That was, that was, yeah, that was it. And I didn't see, I didn't see your, I didn't go see the flag thing, I felt pretty familiar with it from the variance request way back when.
I believe the variance, the previous variance had a bubbled area that defined the area where the ADU would be, but there wasn't any architecture associated with it. And the variance allowed for 12-foot encroachment into the 100-foot setback, allowing the building to be within 12, 12 feet closer than the 100 feet. I moved it eight feet. So we moved it, we're up the hill four feet, further away from that steeper slope. And we really intend for this building to sit naturally on the property, so there's, we're really just trenching footings, we're keeping the grade natural. If you had been to the site, you would have seen a fair amount of concrete in the back behind the house. There was a pool there years ago, and there's a lot of kind of broken up concrete walkway and whatnot. And we're wanting, as part of this project, to clean all of that up, and that will help to just mitigate more, you know, pervious, less impervious surfaces, and clean it up, change it to garden.
Great. Any other questions from the commission? If not, is there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Oh, he's not here. Yeah, I hope, I hope it wasn't too onerous for you to come for architecture review for this ridge change, it's like, it's a, it just didn't fit into the objective design standards, which made, would have made your approval ministerial. And given, A, the beauty and quintessential motherlodeism of the building, it looks great, it's perfect, the vernacular is right there. It's a nice, it's a nice looking building at that roof pitch, and it's situated in such a way that would not be disturbing at all to the neighborhood, to the context of the neighborhood. So, all good things. Thank you for coming.
I think it looks beautiful. My only comment, and this is not trying to be pushy at all, is that I live in a very similarly sized cabin, or so it's called, with a very steep pitched attic, and I've turned it into my bedroom. And I always encourage, I always find unused attic space a bit odd, so I encourage everyone to actually use it, or at least leave the possibility for it to be used, but this looks great.
I agree with you, and if we weren't struggling with square footage maximums, living space maximums, I would have loved to have done that. So, we're at 730 square feet, 723, something like that.
Well, probably if it, like, in my case, at least only like 60 feet of the upstairs is considered usable because it's above six feet.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that would, if that's what you wanted to do, I wonder if you could get away with it, but I will leave it there.
Okay.
Has like storage space?
Yeah, barely. I mean, we'll have some kind of an access, but probably not. Yeah. But I, I understand that. I love attic and rooms and different pitches and nooks and crannies and places for kids to hide and all of that, yeah.
Or adults to sleep.
Or adults, imagine, yeah.
I would just add, I appreciate the effort to make the building more compatible with our style of architecture. I think it's, this is a great kind of variance to have. I also appreciate the effort to, you know, even get that four feet back farther from McCree too.
Thanks.
With that, would someone like to make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve the architectural review application with the new, yeah, conditions of approval as suggested. What are the conditions? Oh, A, that the ADU is compatible with Nevada City style architecture, and the proposed residential exterior alterations are compatible with the context of the surrounding neighborhood, and also a recommendation for, a recommendation for no further SEQA review?
To find it SEQA exempt. Oh wait.
Yeah, do a SEQA finding. Is it not written in here?
Not.
It actually is not.
If the next one has SEQA.
I believe it would fall under the recommended condition of approval too, that all measures to reduce potential impacts.
You mentioned in your introduction, so.
Yeah. If you could please just include that in your motion, that would be helpful.
Please include that in my motion.
See, to find the project SEQA exempt.
Yeah.
It's written in the staff report.
Shall I say it all again? I recommend, I make a motion to approve the architectural application as presented, making the findings, making findings A and B, and that we find it to be SEQA exempt. I'll second that motion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Nye?
Yes.
Vice Chair Covden?
Yes.
And Chair Brown?
Yes. All right, great.
For easier.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Moving on to the next item, which is 531 North Pine Street, Architectural Review with Demolition. This is for a garage. Are the applicants there? Here, please come forward.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right. Lisa.
All right. So with us today, we have David Bueller of Bueller Enterprises, representing property owner Meli Neek Curtis for her garage renovation at 531 North Pine Street. Before you today is an application for Architectural Review, which includes a demolition component since the structure is being altered in a way that changes more than 25% of the building materials. The proposal is to remove the old chic cedar shingle siding and remove old windows and doors from the sides and rear of the building. The front garage door is proposed to remain the same, as well as the roof and gutters. And then I will call out that the, I'll share my screen here. So this is the view of the building from Pine Street, and you can see the house over here. The house was fully renovated several years back, and the garage is basically proposed to be matchy-matchy with the house, so similar siding, similar trim, and similar colors. This is the current condition of the rear, so I'll let David speak to this. I think that we're only preserving one door and not any of the windows, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, this shows the side. I did issue a tree removal permit for these trees. This shows the color. And then this is the opposite side. So there's a window on this side, you can't really see it, and then there's a window on this side. So this will be the vinyl windows that are proposed in the application. Here's another photo of the front of the residence. Let me just check here. So yeah, again, the siding is eight and a quarter hardy plank, and then the windows vinyl, and the door is a standard steel. Anything you'd like to add?
No, that's, that's about it.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the commission? I have one. Are you planning to duplicate, or what will the trim treatment be on the, on the windows that are replaced in the garage?
I'll match the house trim. Whatever the house trim is, we'll match it. I believe it's two by four right now.
Any questions? That's it, no. Any?
No.
None for me either. I'll open it up to public comment then. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Looks fine, looks, to me, it looks like a, like a great improvement.
Yeah. It's pretty rough looking right now.
Yeah. And, and just to, and just to have you say it out loud, the only demolition will be the windows that you're replacing and the, and the shake siding.
And the shake siding, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we're going to shear it all up with shear and just make it strong.
Right.
And then put the siding on it.
Yeah, it's, that's kind of a mess.
Yeah, it really is.
You're not going to replace the garage door?
She didn't have in the budget yet, but visually it should be replaced, but.
Okay.
Sounds like eventually.
Yeah.
Plenty to do.
And I appreciate you following the guidance, our requirement from the demolition plan too.
Yeah, yeah.
With that, would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve, per the staff report, with the findings that it is SEQA exempt, and to approve the demolition Architectural Review application subject to conditions of approval, making the following findings pursuant to Section 17
and to approve the demolition architectural review application subject to conditions of approval, making the following findings pursuant to Section 17.88.040 of the municipal code. One, that the current garage has become so dilapidated it's beyond reasonable repair, or not a building of special historic interest or value. Two, that the proposed garage renovation is generally compatible with Nevada City style architecture. And three, that the proposed garage renovation is compatible with the context of the surrounding neighborhood.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Vice Chair Covden?
Yep.
And Chair Brown.
Yes.
Not looking my nose.
Great, it's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to add, though, if your client decides to change the garage door, that would be an architectural review thing.
Okay.
It would need to come through us, so.
Okay.
A liaison, one member of the commission could be appointed to approve that garage door.
Okay.
I mean, provided it seems consistent with the neighborhood.
Right, right.
And that's a suggestion I would make, and just to the chair.
Timing wise, do you know what she's thinking?
I don't know. I know her budget's tight, and I told her we'd go ahead and paint it, as long as we're painting the whole house or the whole garage. We'll paint that as well and see what it looks like. But right now, it's not very attractive.
And a permit is good for how long?
Two years.
Two years.
Okay, okay. I'll run that by her tonight, then.
So it wouldn't, Lisa, it wouldn't be an additional architectural review meeting if they were to add a garage door to it?
It might be considered minor if it's the same door, like if it's, I mean, garage doors are typically steel, right? So if it's a like-for-like, that'd probably be a minor architectural review.
I think without seeing it, I would be hesitant to.
Which would be staff.
Yeah, if it's staff, great. I think without seeing it.
Tom is recommending that we assign a liaison now, so we don't have to make her come back.
Liaison aspect of this approval, so that if, then you don't have to come back for a minor architectural review, even it's the same permit, same.
I guess my comment would be, yeah, realize that probably unlikely, but give the public the comment, the opportunity to comment on it if it did change.
Okay.
My point is it'd be one thing if we were just, if we knew what it was, or knew approximately what it was.
Right, right.
But without that, I hesitate to just give it to a liaison. I'm hoping that it can just be done as a staff item.
I think it probably could. I mean, do people put in something other than a steel garage door?
Most of the time, they're steel. It'd just be the design, whether there's different windows or anything different on it, yeah.
It'd be minor.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably similar in like cost scale, the one that exists.
I know it operates fine right now, but it's just not attractive, so we'll paint it and see. Maybe it might look better.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, have a good one. You, too.
All right, going then to the next item, which is 107 Argal Way, Onyx Theater Amendment to Architectural Review and Sign Review for Approved Conditional Use Permit in the local business zone. Thanks for coming up, Andrew.
You're welcome. Glad to be here.
All right, Lisa.
Okay, so a little background on the Onyx Theater project. The applicants received their approval from the Planning Commission in July of 2023 for their site plan, conditional use permit, and architectural review application. An amendment came through for the site plan, architectural review, and sign changes in 2024, which was also July of last year. And then that approval included the mural review as well. And then an extension of time was received and reviewed and approved by the commission at the July 17, 2025, meeting of this commission. The applicant would like to change the style of the sign on the front of the building. That's for the marquee sign. And the, in order to accommodate the new sign design, the designers are proposing to change that gable end of the building. And from my understanding, there's a sign which mirrors, or is very similar to the one that's there now, above a steel beam that has the word Onyx on it, and then the marquee below that. And from what I understand from talking to the applicant, the steel beam is a little bit wider, and that is one of the reasons why they brought the front gable out, is to accommodate this new design style of the sign. So in my staff report, you'll see the difference, how the front of the building gable was recessed before, and it had some screening, and then that screening was removed at their approval last year, and I believe changed to stucco. So now the whole gable end is coming out, so the ridge will come out to the, basically right next to the parking spaces. Under the purview of the Planning Commission's review of conditional use permits, site plans, landscaping, and regulations of signs are part of the Planning Commission's purview. And in the local business zone, signs are intended to be either integral width or attached flat against the building. Section 17.80.190 states that the aggregate sign area cannot exceed four square feet of sign area per 10 lineal feet of lot frontage, or with 24 square feet minimum allowed. And the lot frontage is calculated at 115. I'm sorry, I'm misspeaking there. I don't have the lot linear feet of the frontage in front of me, but the calculation was done to come up with that 115 square foot allowance for the total signs on the site. So in your recommendation, I'm looking for the Planning Commission to take action on the architectural review and sign amendment. I will let you add whatever I may have missed, Andrew, or to better explain your project.
I think what has been shared pretty much captures it. The, after we had finished and gotten approval for the previous appearance for this portion of the building, the owner was inspired by something they saw and asked us to try and emulate that. And what you're looking at is kind of a recapturing of something they saw, I don't know, in another city somewhere. And they felt like it conveyed theater more meaningfully to a passerby than what they had. And we debated them on that point, but the more we got into it, the more we got excited about it a little bit. And so what's happening is that marquee element, where the movie titles are, is slightly smaller, and then we've added this curved element that really resonates with the owners. They've kind of latched on to that, and they really like the way it looks, and asked us to incorporate it into the design. When we finished that, we felt like it was, I can't recall if it was our staff or the owner probably was saying, well, gee, it's still kind of far back. So we were also looking for ways to attach this steel structure with the letters on it. And what's in the attic of that place, it was going to be a big task. So we said, well, what if we built a new element with the kind of framing members in there necessary to hold that thing up? And that's how we got to where we are. No other changes are proposed, except for a minor reduction to the size of the sign on the far end on serals to accommodate the additional signage in this area.
And then can you clarify, is there lighting proposed behind the steel beam to shine down on the marquee?
Yes, yes. That would have along the top of the marquee, so where you see the words movie title on the upper line, that small white rectangular box at the top conceals the downlighting.
Okay, so it's not behind the large steel beam?
They have been, let's see, we wrote here, curved metal beam with the Onyx letters, brackets. I don't believe we're proposing lighting behind that steel beam according to these drawings.
Okay, I was kind of making that assumption, but I wasn't sure.
I think they wanted us to do that, and, you know, they were talking about lighting up the sign that's on the wall behind it with the Onyx and so forth. So we might have indirect lighting, yes, that mounts behind that, but it's not currently proposed as part of this. But that curved beam element has a C shape to it in section, so the light would be hidden inside there and wouldn't shine up horizontally against that wall if there were one. I think we never really quite reached a point with them on that. There's also, I don't think we have quite the depth to hide a light underneath the eve above the sign like we do on the serals frontage, so I think it would have to be behind that curved steel. But you would only see the effect of it if it was there. You wouldn't see the light itself.
And how the eve on that front, how wide is that?
So the depth of the projection above?
Well, the gable end and then the eve that comes out.
Don't know that I have that information here. Some of the.
It looks pretty narrow.
Some of the three dimensional views make it look like it's pretty shallow. But that could certainly be addressed. That could be a deeper element without affecting what we're doing, because it's all brand new construction.
I'd like to clarify, your question, Lisa, are you asking if there's a slight roofed overhang? Oh, where your cursor is?
Like how deep the eve is.
How deep the gable end is from the.
Yeah, I don't know the dimension.
Not the ridge, I mean the far drifter.
Yeah, and I don't know the dimension, but I will agree that on this 3D illustration, it looks rather shallow.
Yeah, it looks very shallow, yeah.
So I'm making a note about that to give that some depth.
And there is no vested, oh, I'm not supposed to ask questions yet, so I won't.
Anything else you'd like to add, Andrew?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Anything else, Lisa?
Um, no.
All right, go ahead, Tom.
So the gable end, while it's proposed, terminates just above, and there's like some sort of like return to the beam below. So it's flush, basically flush?
Yes, yeah, that plane of cement plaster, I think that sits a little proud of the casing that goes over those beams that form that patio.
Okay.
Just to get the water to drip off. If you look at the far right end of the building, on some of the views, you can see it comes out a little bit.
And the height of the marquee that cuts into the trim detail, the boxes in the.
Yeah, and that was kind of a function of us trying to anchor that thing as well, but also trying to get that curved beam element to be effective, not below the eve. And then we try to look at things like, how does the person finish the cement plaster between the edge of the eve and the edge of the sign? So we're sort of looking for constructability issues like that, and I'll regrettably kind of force that thing down a little bit.
Because the marquee sign is a fixed unit, it's got a fixed height, and you want letters of a certain size.
Yeah, there's that part, too, yeah.
So the additional, the art, is it, it's an I-beam in section?
I think it's a, well, no, I don't think it is. I know it's more like a C-channel.
Okay, so, and the.
The legs face back towards the building.
Oh, I see. So, oh, I see. So we have what's like a curved rectangle section. I mean, the public sees a curved, a convex rectangle and not a channel? Oh, no, it's actually shown in a channel in your.
Looks like a shallow channel.
Yeah. In your, one of your render.
Illustration, one of them makes it look like the legs are sticking away from the building.
Yes.
Yeah. Is that not correct?
No, I believe that's correct. I was mistaken. I believe those look outward.
And the new Onyx sign on the gable end stands away, they're cut out letters that stand away from the building. Is that right?
Yeah, that's the one that just sits very close to the surface of the cement plaster, and it's there now, and we take it down and put it back in.
Oh, it's the same one?
Yes.
Okay.
Just needs to be taken down and put back up.
Carefully?
Yeah.
And that's all my questions.
Questions, Amy?
Very minor question. The mural is still intended to be on the seral side.
Yeah.
For me, so the Onyx that's in the channel.
Yeah.
It was a little unclear from your discussion earlier. Will that be eliminated, the Onyx naming that's on both ends of that?
No.
Okay.
Those are just described as essentially like white letters that are fabricated and adhered in some way to the black painted surface of the steel.
Okay, well, that is just my next question, the coloring. It's shown as a green in the rendering.
The green is very strong.
The green is very strong.
Unfortunately, it looks like an ancient computer monitor.
It does.
Yeah, so that's why we're careful on these notes to say lettering is white, and the brackets painted black, because that doesn't always stay true.
And then you also mentioned that lighting would shine up on the Onyx on the side of the building? Did I understand that correctly?
This one is not, you know, we're not currently proposing any lighting behind there. I was already saying that if somebody elected to do that, it could be hidden, but it's not proposed as part of this application.
And then question to you, Lisa. You mentioned something about the, our ordinances are requiring the sign to be flat against the building. Did I understand you correctly on that?
That is the, how the code reads for the signs on, in the zone, I believe. Yeah, in the local business zone.
So do we need a variance, then, to accommodate that?
No.
For the C-channel sticking out? I mean, I think we could just add it in and approve it if we all agreed it was appropriate, but.
Yeah, it also speaks to Argal Way specifically, and how the signs are typically on the roof.
Okay.
But I can pull that up and take a look at it again.
Okay. This is my question. Do you have another question, Tom?
No, some discussion maybe, but no questions.
Okay, since there's no members of the public here, no public comment, so discussion.
This is a more elegant way to frame the marquee sign, using, extending the gable end out over the porch, because it was a little clunky, like it was housed in a way that wasn't very clean.
Agreed.
So I think this is a cleaner way to deal with that sign. I'll just say in my own opinion, the kind of cute thing about the local vernacular on Argal Way is the signs propped up on the roofs, on the roofs, on, you know, in front of the entrances to the businesses. And it would have been extra cute if this marquee could do the same thing. It would be sort of a high performance version of that, a maximized hack essentially of the vernacular, making the most of it.
Yeah.
But that's not what you guys proposed, so this does change the massiveness of it, as it presents to the public face. I don't think it's bad. It's, and it's a better way to house the marquee again. Though I personally feel as though the art beam is reminiscent of another kind of place, and not in the Seven Hills District of Nevada City. and not in the Seven Hills district of Nevada City. It has a, in my, aesthetically, it strikes me as an upscale retail center kind of thing in a more, in a more conventionally suburban area.
Agreed.
And it's really an ornamental or sculptural element added which isn't the local, it doesn't feel consistent with the surrounding area to me. And it also, in a way, creates a problem that it puts the marquee in an awkward position in relation to that beam. It causes the marquee placement to look less strongly supported. And it's a sort of a less intuitive placement of it. So that's just, that's my take on the composition. But I do feel that the onyx, the additional sign in the form of the arced beam is contemporary and not really in keeping with our citywide aesthetic and certainly not Seven Hills. You know, there's lots of creativity and beauty and originality in the screening elements and the planting, the windows, everything. It's a lovely composition. It sets itself apart really distinctly and well in a way that fits. And we've worked, you know, we all worked really hard to craft it, I guess. You guys may probably worked harder than we did, but a lot of attention to detail went into that. And personally, I feel it's plenty and I would be inclined to find the sculptural element not consistent with motherload architecture or the context of the neighborhood.
Question?
To me?
To Lisa, I suppose. I was under the impression that for the Seven Hills district, we didn't need to have it consistent with the motherload architecture.
Yeah, Nevada City-style architecture and the context of the neighborhood.
Right, so that is a, we don't need to, it does not need to be motherload in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
But to clarify there, Lisa's saying it should be...
Consistent with the neighborhood.
Consistent with the neighborhood style, yeah.
Yes.
And Nevada City-style architecture, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And I think Tom's saying that it's, you don't feel that it is.
I don't. I feel it's a departure from it, which is, I suppose, the power of it, but it also...
I think if you consider it, you know, strictly on its dimensions, its presence, its size, its appearance, consider how diminutive this element is in the neighborhood. Think of the neighborhood at large and then think of this piece of steel that's 22 feet long and a foot tall. I think the words and phrases I'm hearing are suggesting it's really going to alter the perception of how this fits with the neighborhood, but I consider this to be a very small part of that grouping of buildings along Argyle Way, very small. It's not that impacted as being suggested. It's a small gesture that attempts to move this building in a slightly different vocabulary while still being compatible.
Thank you, Andrew.
Had the beam extended quite a bit more, I, yeah.
So I'll bring it back to the commission to continue discussion. Anything else you'd like to add, Amy?
Yeah, I'm going to push back against Tom a little bit. I agree that there are certainly modern elements to this, but I think that we've had variations of this discussion before about the Seven Hills district and the desire to see it revitalized. And I think that this project in particular is central to that revitalization. And ideally, we'll bring in foot traffic, we'll bring in people who are hanging out at the restaurants that are in there and the other kinds of shops. And I always try to keep in mind that for all of our thoughts and observations about architectural elements of businesses that we're reviewing, the, what is the word? The business owners have been thinking about it tenfold. So I'm inclined to support what the business owners thinks is going to work for them, to bring in the clientele that they want. I don't, I appreciate what you're saying. I see that it is a departure in many ways, but I also don't see it as being that, so dramatic that I would say no to it.
I'd just like to answer by, you know, reaffirming how much of a fan of the onyx I am and of the quality of the work that you guys are doing together. The really intentional, really intentional and excellent execution so far. And while business owners have very much in their minds what they want their business to say aesthetically, we're in the role of fitting it into the context of Nevada City, which is a unique place. And it's a unique place because of its, I don't know, not held in 100%, not held 100%, but a kind of overall aesthetic that doesn't happen, that isn't happening in other places. Because stylistic innovation is, I'm not anti-progress, but within context. Stylistic innovations in, I don't want to use the term restrain, but at least considered in the overall context. I hope that made sense and...
It does, but I believe that Nevada City and, you know, just speaking outside of the historical district for a moment and maybe focusing on a neighbor like Seven Hills, that we draw a lot of our desirability architecturally from our eclectic nature. Let's go back to Nevada City historic district and you look at these buildings, I mean, yeah, there's a few of them that are similar to one another, but it's that eclectic nature too. And I think what's being suggested by Commissioner Cobb that too is that change is coming and that individual owners are going to look for something within those boundaries to promote their businesses and to change the look of the neighborhood. But, you know, to do it in such a way that there's so much harmony that, you know, you're going to end up like Irvine and nothing's really going to have the character that I think you would value. So I made that argument before at this table, that I think this town draws its energy from that eclecticism, not from being uniform.
Thank you, Andrew. I do have some comments as well. I looked at this and I have to say I'm somewhere in between. I felt like it was trying to replicate, you know, with sort of a typical theater marquee. You know, you see this a lot of times with something that's prominent and comes out.
That's exactly what the owner saw in it.
Yeah, but, but I feel it was close, but more to Tom's point, I felt like it was a modern interpretation of it. Something that was not necessarily congruent with the style of the neighborhood.
Is it the material or the shape? Or both?
From my opinion, it's both, right? I think if you think of one of those, you don't see a steel beam and it's typically got something behind it as well. I think potentially something that was more directly reminiscent, you know, of that historic thing which we have seen, you know, in this town in the past would work for me, but as presented, I didn't feel that it did that. I also think the positioning of the lettering in that was a much more modern interpretation of that as well. You know, in the past, you would have seen that, you know, much more prominent. And I think especially, and that would have been the primary call-out. It wouldn't necessarily have been in addition to the much larger onyx on the side. So to bring it all the way back, I'm in agreement that I felt like this was, again, a modern interpretation, which I understood the, your expression about the eclecticism, you know, of the neighborhood being appropriate and the city in general. And I feel that we continue to support that. I mean, this is not something, you know, where we have, as Tom was saying, most of the buildings there have the signs standing on the roof. This is not like that. This, no matter what, is going to be, excuse me, be some variance in that.
Yeah.
And we're a long way from Irvine.
Well, and the owner wants a roof-mounted sign, but was told they can't have one, so here we are.
I just want to jump in on that. That, and I think I recall that being a misunderstanding of the...
That you could rebuild them if, like, the sign was gone, but the apparatus was still there?
That would be, no, that would be an internally lit monument sign, going back to another applicant. But I think there was a lack of awareness on, the owners or your part of the code structure that allows those roofs, those roof-mounted signs on Argyle Way.
Okay.
It's somewhere in that Argyle Way Improvement District or something like that. I tried to find it in a...
Tom, what are you saying? Am I getting this correct, that you're saying that we were open to a marquee that came out?
No, that stands on the roof, that's a freestanding...
Andrew was saying that the owner was under the understanding that we would not allow, as is across the street.
That's what Andrew just said, so I was just clarifying that that wasn't an accurate perception, at least to my understanding.
I don't remember that conversation of a request for a roof sign, but the way that...
No, I think as I recall it, and I'm not Mr. Total Recall, but they didn't request it because of their reading of the sign ordinance, didn't include roof-mounted signs, except there is specific language pertaining to Argyle Way.
Yeah, it says, "Signs are permitted..." "...dot-dot-dot, which pertain to a permitted use of the premises and are either integral with or attached flat against the building, except for businesses facing Argyle Way and Cyril's Avenue, which may use roof-mounted signs only if a building sign is not reasonably visible."
My recollection is that it was not an easy discussion.
It was a wide-ranging discussion, that's for sure.
I remember it being extremely challenging and it seems to be, continued to be extremely challenging.
We apologize for that.
Could there, I'm sorry, I don't even know if you're done sharing what you had to share.
That was, I guess the only other comment I was going to make, if there was some, I'm not saying that you have to have that feature that I just mentioned. If the goal was to have, you know, some weight, you know, sort of above the changeable letters or a break in between the changeable letters and, you know, the main, the onyx, lettering above, you know, I think that could be accomplished in other ways. And I leave it up to, you know, your creative ideas to come and do that.
I can't say that I'm totally following what you're suggesting. Can you repeat that?
My point is that it's, this is my interpretation, and feel free to correct me, that the goal of that beam was to provide some division or a break in between, you know, the large, the onyx above and the changeable items below.
I think it was a reaction from the owner saying, "Because my marquee does not have the conventional marquee mass to it where it sticks out and is seen..."
Right.
"I happened to see this thing sidelined and I saw it and it really spoke movie theater to me," was kind of the origins of it.
Okay.
Yeah. The sign sitting flat on the cement plaster is, was kind of outside the discussion of how this curved beam should fit in.
Again, that was purely my interpretation of how these elements fit together.
Yeah, each one kind of has its own value to the owner all by itself.
Yep.
I think is what it is. Would there be a way forward if I changed the curved beam to something more rectilinear and it wasn't steel?
Rectilinear meaning flat against the building?
No, probably still projecting out, but in, you know, using right angles instead of curves. So in plan view, if you looked at it, it'd be a very shallow rectangle projecting out from the wall. I'm just looking for a middle ground here where this is not so different from the neighboring buildings. So I'm thinking maybe rectangular and maybe a different material. And I'm wondering if the commission would feel comfortable expressing their thoughts about that.
Given that there's so much steel already incorporated into the new building proposal, does it actually seem out of place to have a steel beam?
You're talking about the steel elements on the divider down below, the plants that are shown in the front?
Yeah, yeah, and on the other side as well, there's a privacy screen that we approved.
And the planters.
Yeah, there's a lot of steel in there.
Yeah, to me, steel seems a not inappropriate material because there is a lot of it and it's certainly in the Nevada City mining whatever vernacular. An issue though remains for me that the marquee is pressing down into the header element.
Can you explain that, your comment?
Well, the, the marquee...
Oh, the change of the letter portions is dropped below.
Yeah, if it was up, like right at the top of the beam, it'd be more, more...
Is it just that it visually bothers you? Tell us more about that.
Yeah, I get your question, yes. Because it interrupts that simple element that actually gives support to the mass of the, the mass of the now increased roof volume. It looks heavy.
Is it, Andrew, can you tell us if the marquee that is represented that's sitting, overlapping the support beam, is it actually interrupting the beam or is it sitting superficial to it? Would it be like screwed into?
Yeah, no, it's sitting surface-mounted on both that trim and that cement plaster face.
In which case it would just be a visual...
Oh, it's surface-mounted? It's not flush? Not mounted flush?
No, this, yeah, this would be, I think that has some depth to it, you know, because it's certainly got like the, there's a technical drawing of it in here.
I didn't, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't get to that.
It's got some depth. I mean, if you look on sheet ASI 03, you know, it has depth for that LED concealed at the top to downlight it.
Yeah, it looks very thin.
It has that kind of depth, but the rest of it has, you know, very little depth, but it's essentially a surface-mounted sign. It is a surface-mounted sign. It's not recessed.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I answered that.
That actually helps my concern.
Okay.
Interesting question. In terms of my opinion, to me, you know, having the onyx in both places on that is a modern feel as well. I agree that there's a fair amount of steel on this thing, on the project as a whole, and this is consistent with that. The, just the shallow arch though as well, it feels like a modern element to me too. Or I shouldn't say modern, I should say, you know, less consistent element. You know, things within this district are pretty angular.
What if they made a triangular obtusion? Revenant of the marquee as well.
How many degrees do we go?
You're just joshing Vice Chair Cobb.
No, I'm not, actually. I mean, I personally, I like the three-dimensional component to it and I like that it's referencing a marquee. I still regret that we could not or would not give them a marquee because it's movie theater and I love the idea of a traditional movie marquee.
An internally lit marquee.
I said a marquee that juts out. I did not say internally lit. I mean, yes, of course I would like an internally lit one because they're beautiful. And I, and I accept our rules and standards for now. And I, and I accept our rules and standards for now. I, I just, I personally get... I don't, I just feel like we, there has been so much thought put into this constantly, and I feel like we keep slowing things down over very small details that clearly mean more to other commissioners than they do to me.
And I would say that I don't think this is a small detail. I think this is probably the most obvious detail on the building.
Well, I think that, like, the, the marquee sitting over, like, the visualness of it sitting over a line is a small detail. I think that's something that doesn't stand out to everybody who is going to be patronizing the business.
As with paint color or anything else. I mean, what we deal here is, is details in a lot of cases, so. Anyway, we are discussing it.
I was just thinking of like a hybrid between the rectangular and a triangular one where you kind of had, in plan view, you had like canted elements to the side, same, same size and everything, but it cants out and then goes parallel to the front of the building. So it's just sort of a rectangle with the corners cut off, something a little bit more rectilinear, so that we're not introducing a curve to the neighborhood.
That particularly, the curve and the way it's mounted, and, and, you know, I love the artist Sarah's work because it does improbable shapes with steel things. A sculptor does massive bent steel structures.
Oh, Sarah, yes.
Sarah, yeah.
I'm with you now.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I even, I actually see, I actually see the artistic gesture here and appreciate it as well. And, you know, I also, I also feel that as presented, it has just a really out-of-context contemporary feel to it. And all the other things that are pretty contemporary are incorporated so nicely to seem, I think, everyone's satisfaction. And, you know, after, after a lot of work, because there are a lot of details, a lot of them, to this. And the complexity of the design is like, great and appreciated.
And the attention to that detail.
I think, I think, I think making it not art would bring it closer to a more, a less unexpected shape. I know that sounds dodgy, but-
No, it's all right.
I would agree. I think I already said that. So at this point, is, well, I should, is there any more discussion?
I have something I could add if it might help. Sometimes when I'm like doing a renovation project or choosing a paint color, if I see something and I know exactly what that color is, it's more likely to turn out good if I use something that I've actually seen in person. And so with Celine or the property owner seeing something similar to this, she might have a good idea of that it actually will come through. While working with the unknown and changing to a, you know, rectangular shape or some new design feels a little bit like it could be more unknown, so that's all.
And for my part, I'm trying to get some identification of what portions of the design I should really focus on so I can come back with a successful one, and so-
So I think we've heard the curvature, at least two to three of us, feel that's inappropriate. I think we're agreed that the steel was appropriate.
Okay.
By the way, would you think, would, I think, would, were you considering like Corten rusty steel or like the railings?
No, this, this one was actually gonna be finished, yeah.
Because, because of the risk of bleed onto the-
I think that was part of it. I think also we were, you know, we were gonna try and put these letters on there and so on and so forth. And also that the image we were given was like a finished, you know, primed and painted or epoxy coated steel.
I wonder if sharing the image of the original inspiration might also be helpful for the commission, to Lisa's point.
I'd love to do that because it has a bunch of lights on it. It's gonna take me a minute to find it, but-
Would you be open to seeing?
Sure. I, I will say, to stretch the discussion a little bit, that, I don't, I don't doubt that, that Celine, she has good taste, saw the gesture, appreciated it. And I'm, I'm pretty good at seeing things that don't exist when represented, especially with rendered views. So it's really a matter of, it's a really, it's a really good impulse and, and idea, and it suggests what she's after, and it really is just the context. It doesn't, doesn't fit, in my opinion, the curved thing as it is.
And I would second that. There's a lot of things that we see before this commission that would be beautiful in other contexts, or maybe even are beautiful in themselves, but, you know, don't fit within, you know. And again, it's all a matter of our best application, you know, of the guidance that's in the code and the sign guidelines and all that, so.
Understood.
With that-
I'm the city architect for Grass Valley, so I sit on that side of the table every couple of weeks or so, so I get it.
Good. With that then, let's see, how can we do this? So-
Well, can it be continued and I bring back a new design?
It could certainly be continued. I was going to ask if like a partial approval, like of the, the changeable letter portion would be useful, or even if that's something the commission would consider. First, let me ask it, would it be useful to you, Andrew, to have a partial approval?
I don't think so.
Okay, then maybe the best thing is-
Yeah, we're all recorded, saying we kind of liked that part, and, yeah.
Okay.
And clearly, it seems the moving of the gable end out to the edge of the porch is fine, and a good way to deal with-
Agreed.
A good way to deal with the marquee.
All right. We'll continue this item then.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Andrew.
All right. With that, anything else, Lisa?
I don't believe so. Just an announcement about our next meeting on the 21st. And I am trying to coordinate a special meeting between the Nevada City Planning Commission and the Fire Safety Advisory Committee. So check your email about that. It sounds like Rod's out of town for the dates that I proposed, so I'll send out some new potential dates, and then we'll see if we can find a good day and time for that. So hope that's okay to have two meetings in September. And Rod, you'll be absent for our next, for our September meeting?
I will also be absent for our regular meeting this month.
August and September?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and that's all I've got. Oh, one more thing. The voting for the Dark Sky photo contest is currently open. I believe it closes soon on the 10th. So please check it out and vote for your favorites. We're having a category for Best of the West and Best of the East. So check it out and vote for your favorite.
And where is the, and Lisa, tell us where a link to that is, if it's an online voting system.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be go to the city's website, www.nevadacityca.gov/darkskies. And then there's a link to the Sierra Sun's page on there, or just type into Google Sierra Sun Dark Sky Photo Contest, and it'll take you to there, to that page, and then you can scroll through and see all the images that were submitted. Quite a few this year. It was great to team with Town of Truckee on it. They really took the lead, and that took the weight off of me, which was amazing. And the Arts Council assisted as well. And so, yeah, Truckee has, is part of the cultural district. And so, yeah, we're thankful for their support and of the Dark Skies initiative and their, their desire to protect the night skies across Nevada County. So, yeah, please take a look, vote.
The Second Annual Dark Sky Photo Contest.
Correct.
Excellent.